Somebody wants to make a motion to open the floor for public comment for a total of fifteen minutes.
I'll second this.
The motion made, seconded, all in favor. I propose so carried. I'd only ask that you identify yourself for the record and make a statement here. We can't answer questions. There's an awful lot of people here tonight that want to make a statement for or against the safe act. Now's the time and it's about seven forty-seven. Yes, supervisor?
Mr. Chairman, if you stop the clock a second, I have a letter from Congressman Chris Gibson asking me to read.
Could you read that when we get to the part of the supervisors? When we go around? Because each supervisor, we're going to do a voice vote on the side soon and every supervisor will get a chance to speak. Does a member of the public want to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Leah Wilcox and I live in the town of Ankrum. I am a supporter of the New York Safe Act and I would like to ask a few questions for each of you to think about, not to give me answers. Do you believe that a mentally ill person who a qualified mental health professional has determined is a danger to himself and others should be permitted to buy and own guns? Do you believe that gun owners who are ineligible to own guns, such as felons, drug dealers, and domestic abusers, should be able to purchase ammunition to be used in their illegally owned firearms? Given that permits for handguns have been required for some time, why is there an objection to requiring permits for assault weapons, which are much more lethal weapons? Because of the enactment of the New York Safe Act, I ask you all, which of you will no longer be able to buy a handgun, a shotgun, or a rifle? And which of you will have to relinquish any guns you currently own? Please raise your hands. Which guns will you have to relinquish? Which guns can you not buy?
My hunting rifle.
You're plenty of one. You own them already.
Yes.
And no one is...
Excuse me, this is not a discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the statement. Does anybody else want to make a statement? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my right to speak. In answer to that, I think the term assault weapon is being about in a very bad manner. Granted, many people don't need a hunting clip. However, I can do as much damage to anyone with an assault weapon or a pistol. No one in this state is permitted to have a gun who is deemed mentally incompetent. I think we're reacting to the news media. I really object to the governor railroading this bill through. I think everybody has a right to carry a weapon in this state. And I hope the board of supervisors feels the same way.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else? Yes, sir.
Chairman, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Jed Kell, town councilman for Claremont and one of the founders and organizers for Hudson Valley Americans for Freedom. We just had a meeting in Germantown on the Safe Act. We represent at least two hundred and fifty to three hundred voters in this county. We, the people of the Hudson Valley, Americans for Freedom, disapprove of the amended resolution concerning the New York Safe Act. We find the original resolution, which was sent to us by Congressman Gibson, which received a vote of approval in the Columbia County Government Committee, to be inappropriate and necessary, even a strong stand against the New York Safe Act. We see the possibility that there might be a strategy to vote the original draft down and then vote for the revised draft, which was amended by the county attorney. We protest such a tactic. The people deserve to have the resolution passed by the government committee be approved by the full board without any bait and switch, leaving Columbia County with a weak resolution. We find the following changes of the amended unacceptable. Changing repeal to amend without even specifying what amendment is to call to do almost nothing. We don't want that. We want a full repeal. Since a resolution opposes the New York Safe Act, logically it makes sense to approve, to oppose any federal gun act. We approve the original version.
The original version is what's under consideration tonight, sir. Thank you. Yes, did you want to speak now?
Yes, I did. My name's Catherine. I'm Eddie's wife, a law school founder and organizer, helps Americans free, help Americans free. History repeats itself when the people are ignorant of history or unaware of what's going on around them or a bull. As soon as a population of people is deprived by their government to defend themselves, they are slaughtered. Russia killed forty million of its people. China killed fifty million of its people. And Germany killed thirteen million people. Gun control is all about control because it starts with gun registration. It forces people to disclose that they have guns so they can be targeted for future compensation of their guns. Our fundamental right to defend ourselves comes from God. The founding fathers knew this and had flawless perception when they gave us the Constitution, especially the Second Amendment. Thomas Jefferson said, "The strongest reason for people to retain the right to keep and bear arms is as a last resort to protect themselves against tyranny and government." Katie Workman, Austrian-born Hitler survivor stakes. In Nazi Germany, after the guns were registered and the government decided to confiscate guns, if you didn't comply and you turn in your guns, you faced capital punishment. It only took five years for the Nazis to gradually escalate up to a dictatorship. She warns us to keep our guns and buy more guns. She reiterated our founding father, Thomas Jefferson's words. "When the people fear their government, there is tyranny. When the government fears the people, there is liberty." You swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Are you going to keep your oath or is it an empty campaign promise like that? We don't want to repeat history, so defend the Second Amendment of the Constitution now by voting yes on the original draft resolution against the New York Safe Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Eddie about? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Williams. I'm a resident of Claret. I'd like to thank the county supervisors for taking the initiative to create this resolution, trying to oppose the Safe Act, and to all the loyal patriots and concerned citizens who came tonight to speak regardless of their position on the issue. I'd like to reiterate something I brought up at the meeting in Columbia County College a couple of weeks ago and the last week in Germantown. You'll pass the resolution tonight, hopefully. Other counties, other towns throughout the state will do the same. But this law hasn't been fully enacted. And I'll repeat again the same thing I told the people in Germantown Thursday night, which were representing the sheriff's officers there. When this law is fully enacted next year and the registration has to be, the compliance has to be in place, and the state of New York realizes that there's only a token registration, that's when we're going to have a day of reckoning. Because the state of New York is going to be faced with the reality of having to enforce the law. Now, is it going to be enforced by county? Is it going to be enforced by local police departments? Or is it going to be the state police going door to door? I ask and implore people in a position who can make a difference, reaching out to all many, have a dialogue with the governor's office, talk to the state police now, because it'll be a lot better to resolve these issues on how these things are going to be handled now. And hopefully, the laws will overturn some of this, the law will be amended in some way. But I'm telling you, people are not going to register their firearms. And there's going to be a day of reckoning in New York. And none of us who are sane leaders in the community or individuals want to see that happen. And I would ask that whatever you folks can do here collectively and working with other counties and people around the state to try to make a difference, because I think it'll avoid bloodshed and tragedy.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm just a conservative person. I'm opposite the New York State law because all innocent people have a, you control the gun, whatever the criminal. How you control the criminal gun? I go to the mild body. Criminal has a gun, I have no gun. When I call the police, how he set us, our life? He can put and shoot me. What can I do? Nothing. So I'm opposing that reason because criminal, you cannot control the criminal gun and you control my gun or somebody got innocent people gun. So it's not a... So I'm opposing that. That's what we have to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Peter Ononey Jr., resident of the town of Galatin, my landlord was an officer. And I can tell you firsthand that gun control as it stands does not work. If you give me a moment, it's very clever and I'd like to share with you. Malon Labbe, two little words. With these two words, two concepts of verbalized that have lived for nearly two and a half millennia. They signify and categorize both the heart of the warrior and the endowment spirit of mankind. In four hundred and eighty B.C., the forces of Persian Empire under King Xerxes, numbering according to Herodotus, two million men had bridged the Hell's Court and marched in their areas to invade and enslave Greece. King Leonidas of Sparta and another Greek city-state agreed to help stop the invading Persians and marched three hundred handpicked troops to Thermopylae on the north coast of Greece. Thermopylae was the best of three possible defensive areas in which Xerxes' invading army had to advance. This mountain gap along the coast was about sixty feet wide and was the best location to block an action. The confines between mountains and the sea were so narrow that the Persians, Moths, and their cavalry would be at least partially neutralized. Since the three hundred knew they were going to die fighting against overwhelming forces, the first requirement was that each man had to have a salute in hand. When Leonidas was prepared to make his stand, the Persian envoy arrived. The envoy explained to Leonidas the futility of trying to resist the advance of the used Persian army and demanded that the Spartans lay down their arms. Leonidas told Xerxes, "Malon Labbe, coming get them." After days of fighting, having killed countless members of Xerxes' elite troops, they were finally overrun after being betrayed by a traitor who showed the enemy another path to run to defend us. King Leonidas, his Spartans, and their Thessian allies died to the last man. The Xerxes marched on and destroyed Athens. The standard of valor set by the sacrifice inspired the Greeks to rally, and in that fall and spring defiantly defeated the Persians of Salome and Plataea and preserved the beginnings of Western democracy and freedom from perishing in the cradle. Two memorials remain today at Thermopylae. Upon the modern one called the Leonidas Monument, in honor of the Spartan king who fell there, is engraved on a marble sled his response to Xerxes' demand that the Spartans lay down their arms. Leonidas replied was, "Malon Labbe, coming get them." The second monument is a plaque dedicated to those heroes at the site of Greece. Go tell the Spartans, travelers passing by, that here obedient to their laws we lie. The point of this true story is when anybody demands you to give up your arms, tell them, "Malon Labbe, coming get them." Quote, these words live on today as the most notable quote in military history, and so began a classic example of courage and valor in its dismissal, dismissal of overwhelming superiority of numbers, wherein the heart and spirit of brave men overcame insuperable odds. We have adopted this defiant utterance as a battle cry in our war against oppression because it says so clearly and simply, "To those who would take our arms." It signifies our determination to not strike the first glow but also not to stand mute and allow our loved ones and all that we believe in and stand for to be trampled by men who deprive us of our God-given or natural, if you will, rights just to suit their own needs. End quote.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
I'll go real quick. The National Academy of Sciences in two thousand and four did a study nationwide of all the communities that adopted gun laws, those that hadn't adopted gun laws and so forth. And they found conclusively in that study that there was absolutely no statistical evidence that showed any gun legislation prevents crime. The crime rate in Great Britain is five and a half times the violent crime rate in the United States. Violent crime rate in Great Britain is over two point two percent, according to their studies, their FBI, at their, whatever it is, they publish. Scotland Yard. Our FBI studies show the crime rate right now, the violent crime rate in the U.S. is only three, is point three seven percent, significantly lower. They have the strictest gun laws in the world. We have some of the most liberal. There are lots of other studies that I could show you, but there's no rational basis to defend a gun laws.
Could you state your name for the record?
David Love. L.U.C.K. I'm a certified public county chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Dillman. I'm from Red. I was at two previous legislative meetings and both Ulster County and Douglas County repealed the Safe Act. And there was absolutely no time limit on public comment. And at both meetings, over sixty people spoke. You know, I think limiting public comment is not a good idea. The New York Safe Act fails to make anyone safe in New York. It fails to secure our schools and our school buses. It fails to keep murderers in jail where they belong. It fails to commit violently mentally ill individuals, known violently mentally ill individuals. If we, as a country, focused from the beginning on people committing these crimes rather than the inanimate objects they use, the number of these crimes would have been reduced. The Second Amendment is not about hunting. It's about protecting the United States from tyranny. And when I used my First Amendment right recently to protect the Second Amendment, I experienced tyranny right in Red Hook. I'll tell you about it. I went to DeeDee Barrett's office in Red Hook and I asked to speak to the Assemblywoman to explain my opposition to this proposed law. On the twenty-sixth of February, I came home from a day of work to find the Red Hook Village, a Red Hook Village detective in my driveway. All right? He was sent to my home by DeeDee Barrett. He told me that I had done nothing wrong. But he was at my home as a courtesy to DeeDee Barrett. I agreed with him. I had done nothing but used my First Amendment right, like I'm doing right here, right now. And I stressed to the detective that I would continue going to the office until I met with her personally. Okay? He thanked me for my time and he left. The next morning, I went to Barrett's office and this time I took two friends with me. Okay? I asked her staff why they had sent a detective to my house the night before. They denied sending the detective. I told them again that I wanted to meet with the Assemblywoman in person. We left the office and we were pulled over by the Red Hook Village Police. The officer told me that he had just gotten a call from Barrett's office saying I was irate. I assured the officer that I wasn't irate and that I had two witnesses to verify that. Okay? I wasn't prepared this time. The two officers, I told the officer I would continue to visit her office until we met or she can call me up to set an appointment. Okay, so now after Ms. Barrett received the call from the police officer, they scheduled my appointment. Okay, so she had to be reminded twice about the First Amendment. Okay? Twice. Okay? The First Amendment is all about petitioning your elected officials and voicing your opposition or your approval of what they're doing. Okay? I want to stress how professional, courteous, and understanding both police officers were. It was a pleasure to meet them and they're both assets to our community. As a law-abiding citizen, okay, and I have the background checks to prove it, fingerprints, I'm a lifelong resident of New York State. I felt DeeDee Barrett's attempt to silence my opposition, I felt that she tried to silence me with intimidation. Okay? Tyranny. This should be a lesson for every freedom-loving American, that freedom is more fragile than you think. And those elected officials who want to infringe on the Second Amendment will be the first to infringe on all of your rights if we let them get away with it. And I say repeal the New York Safe Act.
Thank you.
My name's Ray Keeler, Raymond Keeler. I live in Claremont and I am also a member of the Hudson Valley Americans for Freedom. The seriousness of the Safe Act passage is the most deliberate attack of the Constitution ever. This attack is not just limited to the Second Amendment, but to the entire Constitution. Our Constitution is our governing authority and without it, there is no more America. We, the people, are the administrators of the Constitution that was put in place to protect our rights and govern the government. Our government was, has boldly disregarded the Constitution altogether and has taken a firm stand on its actions with unconstitutional justification. There should be no citizen to trust the government anymore, especially considering how this act was passed. If allowed to do what was done, there would be no stopping the government from taking whatever they wish from the people and no one is safe. These times will determine our children's and our children's children's future. The very future of this nation depends upon the people to take back the rights from those who stole them. I pray to God our county tonight will make the right decision with a constitutional resolution and may God help us. I would like to say, as far as this gentleman is talking about gun control and statistics, the government loves to seem to use statistics when it's in their favor, but when it comes to gun control, if you look at Chicago and D.C., how the crime rate has gone up in states such as Vermont and Virginia, gun sales go up and crime rate goes down. And, you know, such as England itself. And I'd just like to say that you cannot give up your freedoms for the sake of security. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My question is...
I'm Phil Chris, I'm sitting in New York. This bill was passed through under the rule of necessity. There's a very simple quote. "Necessity is the cry for every infringement of human liberty. It's the argument of tyrants, it's the creed of slaves." William Pitt said it in seventeen eighty-four and it's still true today.
Thank you, sir.
I don't represent a political party and don't represent a religion. I'm not running for office and I'm not a special interest group. What I am is a father, a detective, and at all costs, I will never, ever comply.
Thank you, sir. The gentleman in the front, there.
Mr. Grant, thank you. My name is Scott Conley. I live in Claret. I'm retired from the state police. I'm an outdoors guy. I'm a firearms dealer. I'll give you a specific regarding this legislation and how it is falling. Of course, we can get into the concept that nothing disinfects like direct sunlight. But as a gun dealer, with this proposed legislation going into effect, it has now that people who are not related as individuals must have a background check run. The maximum a gun dealer can take in charge for this service is ten dollars. The gun dealer does not have to get involved, rightly so. If you think about the parameters that the state has included, what should be done if you're going to take and run a background check between two different parties who a gun dealer doesn't know? The person selling the gun should be checked. The firearm itself should be checked to make sure it was not a result from a crime. This is what happens when we don't give things a couple of days for the public to comment on and to read through thoroughly. It's got to be repealed. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Palazzato. I would ask the board of supervisors to vote in favor of the resolution to repeal. This law makes felons out of law-abiding citizens and I believe it's Class D felony, worse than child abuse. So think about living in a state that you have lawful products, you use them lawfully, and you're thought of as a worse than a child abuser. So I think it needs to be repealed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Adrian Citron, Ankrum, New York. Last week, I received an email from Chris Gibson, and I'm sure many of you did too, asking how you felt about the New York Safe Act and whether you approved it or disapproved and what you thought should happen in the United States Senate. I was very happy to receive that and to be able to answer him. I see a roomful of representatives of people in our community. I have received nothing, nor do I think most people in the community has received any kind of survey to see how people in Columbia County, in each town, actually feel about this act. And yet, you're concerned that the governor passed something really quickly, but you're going to be voting really quickly tonight without looking towards the people who live here. And I don't just mean the people in the room. I mean all the people in Columbia County.
Thank you very much. You've got time for that.
Yes, my name is Daniel Ma from Kent. And I just want to be very brief. I just want to say that in terms of gun control, obviously the government cannot deal with the gun control. It's all about people control. I just want us all to think about the psychology of a government that's involved in people control, what that says about the country that we now live in and where we're headed. So I would certainly encourage you all to repeal the Safe Act.
Thank you very much. We've had, we've had a long time now of public comment on it, so we'll close that period. Does somebody want to offer a resolution, eighty-one, two thousand and thirteen, opposing the process of enactment of the Safe Act for adoption? Yes, you're going to propose that, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we put on the floor the adoption of the repeal of the Safe Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We're going to roll call both on that, but it's worth the call.
Bassett.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a few remarks before I vote. And I'd also like to suggest that we change our procedure slightly so that every supervisor is given an opportunity to comment on this before any of us vote. This is one of those issues I think that we need to carefully consider. Just a background, I'm a veteran and a gun owner. I believe in the Second Amendment. I support the position paper that I found written by the New York Sheriff's Association, which is on their website, which outlines a very thoughtful, very thorough recommendation to continue the dialogue on the Safe Act and gun violence control. I believe this is not a New York state issue as much as it is a national issue. I've seen statistics which indicate the gun violence in New York, which is a state, as all of us know, that has very strict gun control laws relative to other places. Three quarters of the gun violence in this state comes from weapons that are purchased from out of state in states that have weaker gun laws than in New York. If that situation continues, whether we pass stronger gun legislation in New York or not, won't make much difference. I think we need a national solution to this. I think, again, that there are portions of the New York State Safe Law which this resolution acknowledges which are supportable and important. There are portions of this which we need to review and modify. And before I vote, I would appreciate hearing from other supervisors as far as how they think about this.
As been outlined by the supervisor, in this particular resolution that we had, we actually indicated that there is a benefit and will actually, the new gun law will provide some security for some of the citizens in our community. And then in follow-up, we acknowledged that some of these are ill-advised, unnecessary, and unlawful. And to speak to the woman in the back that spoke about having public comment, we initially started having this debate about the New York Safe Act in the public safety meeting. At that particular time, I suggested that we specify more specific, that we talked to the public about this, and it was supposed to be moved to another committee and that process was supposed to take place in, to my knowledge, if that hadn't happened. Me, in looking at the Safe Act, when I looked at the comments that were put forth by the sheriff, which was just mentioned by Supervisor Bassett, I thought they were very, very thoughtful. I thought they were to the point and they outlined their concerns. And looking at the County Sheriff's Association, the sheriff is the highest ranking law enforcement agency we have in this county. And we look at them as our law enforcement professional. And I thought their concerns were well outlined. And I was, I was looking to see for us, if we were going to pass a resolution, it's basically, I think this one is very general and says very little that we would be sending to our state representatives other than we're unhappy. That if we had a model of resolution based on the premise that came from New York State Sheriff's Association, it would have been very detailed, it would have outlined what our concerns were and what some of the things we thought were good were. And we could have sent that to our state legislation and had a better, I think, a better outcome versus sending this out that would just get lost in the pie. And so I just think that we should have went that path and we didn't. Let me hear how this comes through.
Thank you, supervisor. Do you want to make a comment first and then we'll vote? We'll do the roll call vote then.
Yes, supervisor.
To keep it short, I feel that this is about as unconstitutional as it gets in where it was passed. I feel that this is about as unconstitutional as it gets in the way it was passed, because I'm a Republican supporter, and I certainly support this, and I think it's come back that we should all talk with our county members, people. I've spoken to hundreds of people in my county, and so far, it's 100 percent agreed to this deal, so I certainly hope so.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I mentioned earlier that I had received a letter from Congress yesterday to request that I read it. Dear Chairman Bratton, for becoming board supervisors, thank you for providing me this opportunity to address the board. Unfortunately, I cannot be here in person, so I've asked this letter be read on my behalf as the representative of the nineteenth congressional district. I come before you to express my support for the board's resolution requesting repeal of the Safe Act. I think it is valuable for our state and federal elected representatives to hear from their constituents on this important issue. These community discussions and resolutions provide an opportunity. To this point, the majority of the counties in my congressional district have already passed repeal resolutions, and similar resolutions are pending in remaining counties. Furthermore, while I am a federal representative and therefore could not vote on the state bill, I have opposed similar efforts in Congress. Setting aside the deeply flawed manner in which the legislation was passed, my opposition to the Safe Act rests squarely on what I consider to be is a violation of the Second Amendment of our constitutional Bill of Rights, as with all amendments contained in the Bill of Rights. The Second Amendment was born out of our experience with King George and the desire to prevent such abuses of power in our republic. Indeed, at the onset of hostilities during the Revolution, the British Army marched on Concord and confiscated our guns and extinguished our freedoms. The fact that we put the Second Amendment in the Bill of Rights to ensure our right to keep and bear arms and safeguard our liberty is important that this right be preserved today. One of the core reasons that I served twenty-four years in the United States Army and now Congress as the Representative of New York's nineteenth congressional district was to protect and defend all of our constitutional rights. Moving forward, I have ultimately believed that the courts will find the Safe Act to be unconstitutional. Instead of taking guns from law-abiding citizens, we should focus on more effective measures that will reduce violent acts in our country. In closing, I respectfully submit this resolution, I respectfully support this resolution by the Columbia County Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Chris Gibson, Congressman, nineteenth congressional district, New York. Then I have a statement that I have to make. My opposition to the Safe Act is to still concede procedurally incorrectly adopted and wrongly focused law. This was not an emergency situation. The focus is on the wrong segment of the population, the law-abiding citizen, not the lawbreaker. The Constitution of the United States is the best document that all laws should be built on. I took it home several times to obey, protect, and defend the Constitution. My first time was when I entered the US Army, and thereafter, when I was sworn into political office several times. I am not just an old patriot, I'm an old peeler. The Safe Act law tramples on the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. The Second Amendment is not about hunting, target shooting, or sport. It's about self-protection. Hunting laws are already in place and controlled by the DDC of this state. The Supreme Court has upheld that the Second Amendment is a personal right. State laws cannot take rights guaranteed by the federal Constitution. Should you want to change the Constitution, there is a process to do so. It has been done twenty-seven times. Therefore, this law should be repealed, and I encourage that this board to vote to do so this evening. Thomas Dunbar. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think I can speak for each supervisor here when I say that we all have a great deal of respect for a spirited, sometimes contentious debate, especially on issues that we're so passionate about. And obviously, there's a lot of passion in this room. The newly-passed Safe Act law certainly has caused many of these debates across the state and here in Columbia County. However, after the horrific and tragic massacre at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut, it became paramount that something, something be done. Highly questionable, of course, was whether something had been done as quickly as it was done, especially when our legislator passed the Safe Act, burning the midnight oil, and our governor signed it immediately. Right or wrong, depends on who you ask. But I believe the most responsible and rational position statement has been made by the New York State Sheriff's Association, when Supervisor Bassett and Supervisor Hughes alluded to. The sheriffs of New York State support many of the provisions of the Safe Act and believe that they will enhance public safety and help to shield citizens from gun violence. However, some parts of this new law need clarification, and other parts should be reconsidered and modified to meet the concerns of the law enforcement community. I couldn't agree with that position more. I believe this resolution is too rigid. It falls for the repeal instead of the amendment. I believe that there should be a debate over the next couple months, whether it's on a local level, or state level, or both, about what needs to be changed in the Safe Act, what needs to be amended, and then amend them immediately. I don't think repealing this is the right answer. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Scolera. Supervisor, repeal.
Thank you.
I was a potential victim of a home invasion two years back, and I'm also a gun safety instructor for New York State, working for thirty years, also a bone instructor. If it wasn't for the gun, I don't know what would have happened. The individual was looking down the barrel of a Glock thirty-four-five, with a mag light in one hand and a Glock in the other hand. When I had this individual arrested, I stopped him dead in his tracks. Home invasions are an increase. They are an increase, and I got that right from my town police department in Greenwood. I believe that this was shoved down our throats, and as an instructor, I took great pride in instructing people on gun safety, and I still take great pride, still am active instructor. Therefore, I'm asking that we look at it going.
Thank you.
Chairman, I want to thank you, first of all, for pulling this resolution last month and giving supervisors the opportunity to go back to their communities and speak to their residents. Secondly, as you've heard, there were two public forums held, one in every county, and one in the community college, where people were allowed to speak their concerns. I want to thank you twice for allowing the public to come in, and how the ordinary for us to speak for fifteen, twenty minutes about this, and we need to both repeal this position.
I honestly believe that there is a person in this room who does not want to reduce the gun violence, not only in the state, but this country. It's tragic and a problem. So the question then becomes, how do we reduce the gun violence? We certainly support Second Amendment rights, and are concerned about the propensity to institute legislation that often sounds to have, and may even address the issue, but does not get to the root of the problem, nor take into account the full consequences of that legislation for those that must follow it. We have seen it in the annual paperwork that businesses are mandated to fill out, building codes that make little sense, school funding decisions, and many other issues I'm sure you can speak to. Legislation sadly is often used to address one problem only to create another. In order to prevent that, we need to be willing to take the time to ensure that all voices have been heard. Elected officials have the responsibility and the charge to balance all those voices. It is our responsibility to empower public wisdom that bounds around us. It is our responsibility to listen with open ears to all sides of the issue. It is our responsibility to respond not just to the potential positive impacts, but to also know what the negative impacts may be for the multiple layers we may address. It is our responsibility to our best to make thoughtful and well-examined decisions so that the outcome of our legislation will have the impact that we hope for. The implementation of the Safe Act does not embody the principles. We have almost fifty counties, as well as the National Association of Counties, and the Mental Hygiene Directors Association, considering or passing legislation in opposition to some aspect of the Safe Act that certainly speaks to the failure of ensuring that there was a thoughtful process undertaken. There have been issues brought up, addressing everything from the constitutionality of this act, the actual effect on reducing gun violence, the cost tax pay, either dollars or other law services, the impact on public safety officers, the impact on film industry, the unfunded mandates to businesses, as well as counties, the ethics of mental health professionals, and the effect on access to mental health care, the understanding of technical aspects of firearms and what constitutes an assault weapon, the effect on law-abiding gun owners, including increased costs and rendering their firearms useless unless gun manufacturers create seven-round magazines not separately available when their ten-round magazine breaks. That's a lot of unjustification. And with that many issues, we could argue about the wording all day, but the bottom line is it's flawed legislation.
You're mad well said. We have the supervisor, we have Supervisor Bassett.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take the heat off a lot of people here tonight and state publicly that I was the supervisor that put this resolution essentially forth a month ago. It's been modified somewhat from its original form, and to state my feelings on this, I'm the father of four children, and I watched the events of December at Sandy Hook on the television, and quite frankly, I felt similar emotion to the events of September eleventh. Every day since then, I bring at least three of my children to school, and at their school, there is now two people posted to watch them exit the cars and the school buses that they get out of. For me, this is, I, this is an issue about process, the Constitution, and the Second Amendment. I doubt there is a person in this room that would disagree with any legislation that protects our children and the residents of this country. I support the repeal. I believe that there is no other way. An amendment, I just simply don't believe will be strong enough, will work.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor, if not, go ahead with our roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I appreciate all your concerns. You know, where I'm coming from is that there are pieces in this piece of paper that are very, very good, however, it still needs to be worked on.
Thank you, Supervisor. I did want to speak, and I don't want to diminish the conversation we had here tonight about the Second Amendment, because I'm a strong gun holder, but I did want to have a brief conversation about is the process in which we was used to pass this law. I hear quite often people upset with the process and what this law was pushed through, and how it was ran down people's throats. But what people in New York State have to understand is this process was used by many of governors, not that I support the process, but there was very important decisions, I think, that were made this year, not one of these redistrictings of New York State, which will in face change who represented us, will change really, probably to make up a history of what our legislature and our governmental body would have been in this state, and it was done by message and necessity. The evaluations of teachers was probably change how teachers are evaluated, and how we hire teachers, and the performance of teachers in New York State was done by message and necessity. The income levels with the new tier six in New York State that will probably change the workforce if, you know, hiring within New York State was done by message and necessity. And the point I'm trying to make is, if we really want to be serious about this, we need to bear across the board and send a message that message and necessity is not how we want our legislators to do business. But let's be clear, when the governor sends a message of necessity down, the legislature at that point in time could have yielded a vote and said, "We're not going to vote on this," and they could have ordered, they could have ordered for hearings to be done, and they could have ordered for investigations to be done. They did not. So we can push it off on the government if we want to, but our legislature has to bear some of that responsibility as well.
Thank you.
Roll call on eighty-one of two thousand thirteen. Bassett.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for getting all supervisors screwed on this issue. I just have one last thought. I've heard tonight several people say that guns will be confiscated from law-abiding citizens. I don't see that in the law. If I had a legal.
Read again, sure.
If I had a legal that that was going to happen, I would agree that you should repeal this law. But there's nothing in the Safe Law that says.
You're not going to be able to talk.
Qualified with a criminal record or serious criminal offense, that your guns will be confiscated. I guess I'm going to have to vote against or repeal the Safe Act.
That's a no vote. Thank you.
Not just the guns.
Robin Andrews.
Yes.
Bratton?
Yes.
Lawrence Andrews?
Yes.
Stapp?
Yes.
Kivany?
Yes.
Nayer?
Yes.
Degru?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Perica?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brayley?
Yes.
Sterling?
No.
Cross?
No.
Thurston?
No.
Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I would say I would take the advice of our New York Sheriff's Association, leading the law agency in there, and why they were recommended, and that we should have lived this long, and I would say no, repeal.
Thank you.
Scolera?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Benson?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add one thing. I'm proud of the way Columbia County has handled this over the past month, and quite frankly, I think we've done a better job than our state legislators. I vote yes.
Morel?
Not?
Yes.
Young? Mr. Chairman, one sixty-seven is absent. Eight votes, twenty-eight forty-nine, days, slide nineteen. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.